No, you don't have to, not to work. Okay. Councilman, she was going to go through the superintendent.
I'm going to pray. You have a father who wants to hear. We've come so long before you. Ask me to the evening at the Selma City Council. And that liberation of the people's business. But the people is the reason why we are seated here tonight. We actually all are trying to guide us and confuse us with the wisdom and understanding of government. Knowing that we all of you do have to give a loving and holy praise. We hope, we, we resist the whole father to. Unbehave yourself, keep your arms around us. Because Selma continues to stand in need of prayer. We do know and we believe and we try to understand. And we keep in the midst of what we do, we cannot ignore. You're going to always guide us, you're going to always lead us. And you're going to always share your wisdom, your love and understanding of the people. That you have total control over. And all we do is finally going to give you the mother's praise and honor. And we continue to. Actually to be in the midst of what we do. And we're going to always need to depend on you, the father, keeping us in need of prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Shor. At this time, we're at Selma's request, we want to ask Mrs. Steele and Mrs. Jackson, please come forward.
Um, we. Okay, as Chairman of the Friends of the Bonn Smithman Museum, we are, uh, we want to be able to open the building for the pilgrimage. And we, because the building has been closed, it needs a lot of cleaning. And we would also like to ask that you make the fees to use the building for the pilgrimage. I mean, we've always done that before, but it's the new year. And also, we wanted to be able to have our board meeting. We meet every, every other month. And our regular board meeting is coming up March the 10th for the Friends of the Bonn Smithman. And at four o'clock in the afternoon. And we would like to be able to have our meeting at the building at four o'clock. And that's actually tomorrow. And, uh, and then on the 11th, we, we had scheduled a work day. Uh, and we would need to get in the building that day. And then for the week of, uh, March 16th through the 21st, the week of the pilgrimage, we'd like to have access to the building, um, that whole week so that we can get in and clean and, um, and get ready. Also, Bosco, the Bosco Center is going to serve or sell box lunches. Now, they will not, there will not be any food or anything prepared at the building. They just set up on the grounds. And, uh, but we wanted to make you aware that that was in the plans.
Martha. My colleague.
Just that we need to get in some pictures that, uh, when the building was closed rather suddenly. There were pictures that we needed to get in, in high and some displays that we needed to work on. And that's another reason we would like to get in for several days prior to the pilgrimage.
When does the pilgrimage start?
Twenty, it's the 20th and the 21st. So I guess that's next, next week.
Let me get, Councilman Shor.
I want to ask this way this question. Was the items in the building kept all by the inventory?
Um, I didn't understand the question. I'm hard here.
We have, we have company come in.
I don't think we own the artifacts, the, um.
Yeah, but we're responsible.
We're responsible, but they're not our assets.
So if they're. Uh, there's no, I guess, I'm just trying to.
The items that they were told that belong to us, we categor, they categorized those. But it's just like say, for instance, even with the old people there. We don't own the actual artifacts that's in the museum, but we own the building.
I'm just, I just need some assurance. Not to say that it won't be any secure of items in there. You know, after all, the building's been closed now for how long, Mr. President? Couple of years?
Couple.
Couple of years? The building been closed a couple of years, right?
A year and a half.
Year and a half, okay. Uh, I, I really don't see a problem other than I just think there needs to be some assurance that what's in there will be there once it's closed up again.
Is it possible to have someone on board from the city that's working with, um, the public building or the director herself?
I don't know how this can work, how this is going to need to be worked out.
Well, I know that we have, I mean, since the building has been closed, we have, um, we have regularly go inside to check to make sure everything's okay. Uh, Donald Barker, that was our grants keeper, he's been there for years. And the Friends of the Bonn Smithman have, uh, employed him and he keeps the grounds. Uh, we've spent over forty thousand dollars in protecting, we paid the ten thousand dollar deductible when the, um, air conditioners was vandalized. And, I mean, we are doing everything, I mean, we've got collections in there that we check on regularly to make sure that they're, um, you know, protected. And we, I don't think we're going to quit that now.
And, and I truly appreciate that. And then naturally, it's kind of support what you're asking us for. But as councilwoman, I feel I have an obligation to acquire.
Absolutely.
And, uh, just where are we if we can make it happen? Let's make it happen.
Councilwoman Thomas.
I like to speak in behalf of them. Uh, I have been dealing with, this is my second term, I'm dealing with the building, the city public building. Uh, the, the Friends of the. They have put a lot of money, they have put more money in that building than the, than the city have. They all, they, they keep the grounds up, they kept the cleaning of the building until at the time of when they had to give up the keys to the property. And they have not been back in there, they spent money, they paid for the air conditions to be repaired and everything. And they never had a problem with, they always had some, somebody there to make sure that security and nothing that been taken from the, uh, that building. And in the process of, of the time that we've been dealing with, uh, the city property. We also made a, uh, that, uh, we went back to our old contract that has, where no one has, not the fallen attorney, nor our new attorney, he just came on aboard, that, uh, it was supposed to be given to the department head who's over public work. We voted on this, uh, several times about, uh, dealing with the public property. And I think that, uh, those ladies have showed, uh, they have put a lot of money invested into that building. And, uh, with the security talking about, I understand what Councilwoman Shor said, but I've been dealing with this here for many with all of the city property and everybody try to stay within there according to what our guidelines are with the, the city.
To make this clear, I want to question the integrity of these ladies. You know, I do think we have a legislative responsibility to, to be given some assurance that what is housed there continued to be housed there long after the building was closed again, that's all we ask.
And, and this is why I said that I was the chairperson at the, uh, I've been dealing with the, with this situation. And, uh, and I do stay within the legislative guideline of this property with, uh, dealing with them. And we have been with them before other meetings. And, uh, it's nothing new, that nothing had changed. It's just that they have not been in, in the building, they have not been able to.
So I understand that you're just trying to say you want to assure.
The father's a rule and cut off. Uh, once again, I want to make it clear, nobody has a question, the integrity of these ladies, really true. That's not the issue. But we have a responsibility to ensure that what's there now, these still have wants to use this open their cause.
Before I go to Councilwoman Thomas, uh, you have a meeting tomorrow, you said?
Tomorrow at four. And we have been going through Ms. Davis. Terry Davis has opened the building, closed the building. I mean, we're not, it's not like we've just been going to the building and going in. I mean, I feel like it's, um, you know, it's been monitored very closely. And when our alarm has, like, lightning and thunder set the, our alarm off. And, um, so, I mean, Donald has been going, he's the one that Ms. Davis calls to go, um, check on it. So, I mean, I think that, you know, I might have been going with him. I think he just wanted somebody to.
Okay, and the pilgrimage starts next week, 21st and 21st. How, how soon do we got to get in there, start, um?
We had set up to meet, I mean, I mean, this is what we had asked for, is to have our board meeting there tomorrow afternoon, which would be for an hour. And that way we could kind of get a plan. And then third, Wednesday on the 11th, we had planned a work day. You know, we'd sent out notices to everybody to see who all, when was the best day for people to come. And that seemed to be the day that more people could come and help us. And then the week of the pilgrimage, it's just a lot of work getting, you know, I mean, nothing's been, it's dusty, the chandeliers need cleaning, the vacuuming bathrooms. Donald goes in and, and flushes the commotes and makes sure that there's no leaks or, you know, during the, when we've had freezes, he's checked all that, but it's just that, hey, we're old and can't do it all on one day itself.
Councilwoman Thomas, go ahead.
And, uh, um, when they have a meeting, when, uh, allow this council, when they open the building up, when they have their meetings, I've been to one of their meetings, I will go over there when they open it up to make sure. I would, I would come to y'all meeting to make sure that when we leave, everything be same.
All right, Ms. Steele, if you can put a, uh, email it, send it up, smokescreen everyone, send it up, send it to the mayor. And also see Ms. Davis about, we can just move forward to, uh, allowing them to have a meeting on tomorrow. And also, uh, going on the ladder to clean up and also for the pilgrimage.
Now, you said, well, he will, the mayor, maybe.
Now, like I said, we can smoke, or maybe we can send it up, we can send it up, we can do it like they do, like they used to do. Yeah, that's right, we want to put it on the scent, but I, we see they got a meeting tomorrow, on the 10th, but go ahead and put it in right, but we're going to put it on the scent tomorrow.
Yeah, good approval, Mark.
Yes, sir. All right, any other questions?
Um, what about the, they had mentioned to, when we met the other day, it was mentioned to us that, um, we would need insurance. So that's. All right, hey.
Councilwoman Thomas.
This is where we come back in, where the former attorney gammas we had, we gave them that information. This body of this council had voted to go back to the old contract. And, uh, at first, we were saying what we had said at first, to have the people that lease these buildings to have their con, get their own insurance. But we, uh, it was so much that required of, of the person renting the building that they would have to pay out of their pocket. So we decided to go back to the old contract, which provided that we have, um, like, in any event that we have someone there, contract someone to be there. But you, you already have your, your people in place, what you do when you have your event. So, uh, the person, it's a totally different event that you would have. So we had already, I gave Madison all of the minutes about what we had made our decision on. He has it in a, uh, our attorney been had it in a folder, I gave it to him. But we have never, he had never, uh, did it up yet to give to downstairs and to the department head. So that is why the department head is still going by, uh, what we had, what in place at the first time.
Attorney, you had, I told you to look at that.
Not the document, but I did have an opportunity to meet with, uh, Spiritus Jackson and, uh, the mayor and Ms. Davis. I think it was, uh, department head too. And I thought the only, whatever, two, two, maybe three questions. Logistics, who would open and when? The timeframe that access was needed, starting tomorrow with the board meeting at 11:00 for cleanup and out next week when the pilgrimage begins. And the question was insurance. I wasn't aware that the contract from the previous attorneys had addressed that issue, I had not seen it or read it. But I was also of the opinion that the council's will on that was going to control anyway. Whatever the fee waiver or insurance matter was, the council was speaking and that's what I would do.
And that, and that's why we were saying that, uh, this body of this council, when we make decisions and, and vote on, and we have the minutes. But that's why we have city attorney, that, uh, this was in the past when we had gammas and gammas, that we had made that decision. And when, that's why I brought all the minutes to, to Attorney Madison to know this is a drag long progress where someone is, is stalling to keep this from happening, what we voted on. And we agreed to go back and, uh, go back to the old contract, providing that we have a contract person, which we did have voted on a contract person to, uh, assist in all the things that if you lease. But, uh, so now, this contract person that was doing the events, uh, still do the events, uh, was worried about, uh, making too much money. So, uh, we are looking for another person that we can get to assist in doing this openly when y'all have an event. But your event is, uh, does require for, you have Donald to set up tables and that's like when they have at the convention or the Evans bit, uh, event. But you already have someone y'all been using all the time doing the pilgrimage, so, uh, I don't know. We, we don't have, uh, our, the required that we requested on in the minutes, it has not been up yet to move on to, to the mayor and to the department head. Yes, the contract, we, we had attorney, this, this attorney been had our information on moving on, changing, going back to, and then he left it now, where Madison has to come in now, which I gave Madison all of the minutes of everything that we voted on.
What's your home about to score, is that, early back to the contract? Vote on it and just move forward.
That's what I was, uh, that's what I was.
We all recommend this. We voted, so we just got to give it to the mayor and Terry is not going to do anything till she gets that in right. She made that clear.
Okay, can I meet with you tomorrow, attorney, we just.
I, I can have, I can have a ready before they meet tomorrow. I was saying it was a matter of logistics, it was going to open up and when, timing, what time, dates, times, places they needed to open.
Where would that?
And insurance waiver of, of, of fee waiver, that was up to the council, that's all I need.
Basically, we'll have all that in the memo before Ms. Ellis.
And we can have a ready before their meeting tomorrow, that's fine.
All right, anything else?
I think that's it. Thank you for your time and I appreciate y'all listening to us. Harold told me not to get down out of the mouth. Thank you. I did.
All right, Attorney Allison.
I'm up already?
Yeah. All right.
Just, just a little turn.
You feeling better, sir?
I am.
You men?
Uh.
You're not helping me, man. I'm seeing, I'm seeing your assistants, your assistant vice today.
I have, in, in a car, I tried to leave in a car.
At least it's in a car.
Good evening, first of all, President, and council members, and ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my walking band is in a car. If I bring it with me, I'm tempted to use it, I've started physical therapy, so I'm trying to let that dictate how fast and how often I lean on my cane and how mu, how much I lean. It feels better, it feels better to walk without it.
Crazy reduction.
But my wife is telling me, don't be crazy, don't, don't make me go way over there, you all right? So she's keeping me in check too. Uh, I might need these. Uh, council members, tonight on, uh, the attorney's report or agenda, I have following items. Day number. Six five, if I combine the chief's pay raises into one resolution, which I have done and secured a resolution number from the city clerk. So that's, uh, four contracts and a resolution incorporating the pay raises for the two chiefs. The first item is, uh.
I thought we already, have we already voted on?
You did, you did. I, I don't think, you voted on it, I didn't think you had a, a document memorializing it. That's what I was asked to do. Uh, it was.
What's that, what's that number, one twenty?
One, this is, uh, this is one fourteen slash nineteen slash twenty. One fourteen, or one fourteen slash dash nineteen slash twenty.
That's right.
And it just incorporates your decision to, uh, uh, to raise those salaries of both Chief Fullfoot Fire, Chief Fullfoot Police Department and Chief Graham Fire Department. I believe Chief Graham was seventy thousand, Chief Fullfoot was eighty thousand, is what I was told. Is that correct? Okay. Uh, the other con, the next contract was, uh, a contract for Ward Seven, uh, for patrols to be, uh, taken care of. That contract, let me give you these documents.
Wait a second, Dave, yeah, Terry, what, what, uh, what, what, what account is that coming out for the cost?
Uh, I was given a, uh, gas tax account, eleven dash eleven point six two zero zero point five one six four zero point seven.
How much?
Eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
That was the amount displayed the other. Displayed.
Guess I can leave these at the other council, chip, uh, don't leave them.
Just still put, yeah, still put.
I didn't know about, I'll give them to them, I didn't know if I should leave them on the desk, because they don't need to be here overnight. The contract in front of you is to Jerry and John Woods Construction Company uh, for scope of services twelve patio repairs, Burch Avenue, five patio repairs on Kings Drive, three patio repairs on Yellow Anderson Avenue, uh, totaling eleven thousand five hundred dollars out of the account number, which I just identified, eleven point six two zero zero point five one six four zero point seven. Ward seven. The Selma City Vikings Football Club wants to start playing football in Selma this Saturday. I had, from, I have, um, a memorandum of agreement between the city of Selma and the Vikings Football Club, which I want to pass out. I had been presented a contract by the football club. And, uh, everybody, including me, said that's not the way to go. Uh, we draft contracts here and we agree, you agree on it now. The essence of that contract was they want to start playing football this Saturday. They had two away games first that they've already played. And, uh, they, they wanted, they wanted ostensibly an exclusive right to use Mario Park for a whole year. And I don't know anybody who would, who would agree to that because that would, uh, prevent anyone else from using it during the period, include the time when they wouldn't be playing football. So I really couldn't understand why they needed it for a whole year during the season and maybe the practice leading up the season made sense, but that wasn't what we were being asked to do. We were being asked to get a twelve month exclusive right to use from Mario Park. So that instead has been reduced to March the 10th, which is tomorrow, when you will or may or may not vote, March the 10th to March the 30th. Their last game is March the 23rd, uh, 2020. That's a week beyond their last game in case they got into a playoff game or something, which I thought made sense. Uh, I, I was thinking June, but then again, that would lock out anybody else from using, uh, the stadium while they were there. And they, and again, were indeed asking for basically an exclusive right to use, uh, the stadium during that time, which, especially when you're asking to use it at no fee, to me doesn't make sense.
I can, I can recall last year, the same.
The rest of the critical elements of the contract involved him holding the city homeless, paying for insurance, assuming liability for casualty property, casualty act, personal injuries of any players and our general members of the public attending their games. The problem is, I wrote into this agreement an amount to be approved by the city for those occurrence to, to ward against those being responsibility of the city. So the council will still have to decide what is the amount, if considered reasonable, for insurance. I don't know that you've done that in the past, but that's my recommendation, that you give them what you think is a reasonable amount of coverage. I will talk to you about it later, I didn't want to go into a lot of discussion here in open session, but I'd be happy to talk with you, any of you, all of you, about what I think might be reasonable. I'm not an agent, I'm not an insurance agent. Um, I did work for State Farm, but that was to handle automobile bodily injury claims, had nothing to do with casualty, but for the cars that were in the wreck when somebody got hurt, I had settled those, but I never wrote insurance and don't ever intend to, um, not license or agent or broker.
When did they, they play Saturday?
They're supposed to play Saturday, the first home game. They've already played, according to my information, two away games. And they're supposed to play the first home game here in, in Selma this Saturday. Uh, I also spoke with the, uh, the gentleman, Mr. Jackson and his assistant at the stadium. He said, with all the rain, they're going to want to practice too, um, the field because there's nowhere else basically over there for them to practice with the flooding.
Can you give a suggestion from Mr. P, how much maybe we should?
From who?
Mr. Jerry P.
P, at P and Church?
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
See how much.
Sure, I, I think that's an excellent suggestion, that's, that's why I was saying I'm not an insurance agent or broker, be happy to. I can do that first thing in the morning.
I do recall last year, the same group came before the council.
They did.
And this council did agree to allow them, but it wasn't for, uh, any time they want for twelve months. Naturally, we couldn't do that because that, that's the season of our local high schools, is involving their activities. Now, I don't recall a contract they did.
What's that now?
I don't recall a contract.
Oh, they did their own contract. And that's when I passed it to Major Mary.
Okay, so, but did we get that?
I have it right here.
I don't know, I don't know, that's I know.
Did you, you mean the rest of the council?
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
I don't know, I don't know.
I would think they have a contract or a contract.
We never had no contract.
But I do recall the council did a agreement to allow them, to allow.
Counselor, this is what I was handed by Mr. from Mr. Counselor, this is what I was handed by Mr. Brunnex.
I was, I was scared to sit in the ass shape in both ways. I actually have a loss about going forward with this. I'm, I'm at the point I'm going to sit down until we get everything fixed on there and have some insurance that we have to state reservation in the field and the track and the stadium, the stadium overall. Because I'm just one person. There may be some differences of a penny. But there is nothing that really requires us to be supportive of this. It's really gonna cost us money and a long money. No matter how you look at this, it's gonna cost us money. And we really just not in a financial position just to support anybody other than the city. And this is my understanding. This is a private organization. They're semi-pro, and at some point, there's gonna be generational farms. I just don't see it. I really just don't see it.
They said to generate, they said to generate ten dollars per person Saturday.
I wouldn't say it.
They're asking that you get nothing out of it. But they're upkeep of the grounds and the other things listed in the agreement.
Counselor, what?
And you saying, they've been practicing out there anyway on the field. Because I, I see them all the time. And I was wondering, when you said they wanted to practice, they already been practicing. They already be out there, out there practicing, practicing on the field. They ain't just now start practicing. They been playing.
Well, they haven't practiced in the last week or two because it's been flooded.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
But they should have been practicing.
They was practicing already. I know as a council person.
I believe you. I believe you. I just didn't know. I didn't know that. That's what I'm saying.
Because I thought that, I thought it was having a football game when I seen all the cars and all the people. So I'm saying, is the stadium open? And then that's when I realized this, this was them out there. They were practicing.
You mean practicing at the stadium or the other grounds of the park?
They been in the stadium practicing.
I do not have any knowledge of that.
Yes. They been at the stadium practicing, and that's why I was saying, when you, when you made that statement just a while ago about they saying they want to practice and what they want to do, they've been already practicing.
That's the first I agree with a ten dollar charge, y'all.
Me too.
When you, when you find out about it, you do about it. And so therefore, this, this, this team may be good. And I don't have no doubt that it is, but if you guys are moving,
we didn't know much.
This stadium is under a poor situation and that field continuing to be used and not taken care of because they expect the city to take care of the field, strike the field, do everything that's necessary to...
No, they're asking to do that, but that's still a ten dollar per person fee that they're gonna be collecting at the game.
I went to a couple of game last year. I own personally with them was some of the guy's girlfriend and wives, so. I don't even think I ever seen more than ten people at a game. So we wanna charge, get half for the game or what, you know? But it ain't nobody coming to the game. I promise you that.
I can't even charge them anything.
If you...
See, the point is the facilities are not up to snuff. And I don't count the ways. Because I think we're asking for trouble, y'all. Financial trouble and maybe some other troubles that's unforeseen now. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not downplaying this organization. I think it's a good organization, but it extends in the cost of food.
Mr. President, go ahead.
If we're not letting them play, let them know ahead of time. Don't wait till Saturday and say, "Okay, if your contract is going through or whatever." But...
And also too, it's gonna bounce back to the same issue we had with Selma High, you know, the track. So we can't tell one of them though and then tell the other them they can move forward.
They had made a decision waiting back the track, but they couldn't run on the track because now go to...
I think we just need to know.
And they have, Mr. Brunnex has been told by me that they cannot use the track for anything, but that's not gonna stop somebody from standing out there trying to cheer to the ten or fifteen people in the crowd.
That's a slippery slope, guys. Not using the field for stuff. You won't start, you'll have yourself a lot of problems.
Unless you have a police officer standing over there, which is more money to enforce non-use of the track. That's possible. That's possible.
When did you receive this contract from?
The night Mr. Brunnex was here.
So you had, we didn't have council meeting since then and we just not getting this, this contract?
Well, the contract was given to me after he, I thought presented to the council.
Oh, but I'm saying, the night he was here, we didn't have, we didn't have another council meeting and we just now, this is, this is our, we had a council meeting way before this guy came, after this guy came to us. And we didn't, we are just not getting this contract that he left with you saying he wants to have this game.
So that's not the contract he left with me. That's the agreement I drew up. Discarded, discarded the contract pretty much in its entirety because of what, how, it's called a contract of adhesion, what he had drawn. It would be locking the city into a, you haven't seen the real contract that Mr. Brunnex gave me because I was not gonna present that to the council.
And I gave it to him.
I'm glad you did.
And that's why I gave it to him. I wanted to look at it.
You haven't, you haven't seen the contract he presented to me. This, this is what he presented to me. Counselor, one more time. It's right here. You see all this, you see all this yellow highlighted? That's my yellow.
Counselor, in the...
How many games are we talking about here?
Uh, I think about five. One, two, three, four, five.
Five games.
Five. They look like they've got a half and half away in the coming season.
They've already played some of their away games, so...
They played the first two already.
So Saturday, they're looking to have a football game at Memorial Stadium?
Yes. Against the Butler Five Birds, March the fourteenth. Butler Five Birds.
If we're gonna ask them to take another direction, is there any possibility we could look and get the field to them for this one game so we get more time for them to find out whether, you know, because I don't know when their next game is, but this one I mentioned.
The next game is the twenty-first.
Next week?
Yeah. The next game is the twenty-first, but it's in open lock.
So I don't have much time. We don't have between now and Saturday to make, you know, to find a new stadium to play at. So I think they're relying on the conversations they had here and with this contract, thinking we're gonna go forward with this again. I'm assuming that they were thinking that. I don't know.
What you feel, Jeff?
You know, they're saying some things are relatively new. We just found out the date, the ten dollar surcharge and some other things. I don't know what the highlighted areas are, but apparently there's an issue that perhaps don't stand legal muster. That's why you're not gonna submit it to us. But, but, but you know, when you, when you, when you start trying to make things happen, and that's because of the nature of your heart, that's all that'll do. And then versus longer setting too. You know, everything that can happen will happen. It looks to say some catastrophe won't take place on Saturday.
I totally agree with you, but we've just given buildings up for Jubilee and accommodated them. We've accommodated others and other schools in this situation. Again, the only thing is that these young men are trying to do something to keep themselves at arm's length. They are trying to get teams together and at least play a sport. That I appreciate and respect. And I'd hate to hurt their season because we drug our feet on getting the contract. I don't think it was you, obviously Attorney Madison, but again, if there's any concern that they would not be able to get on the football field between now and Saturday, I think some suggestion or some, at least understanding on our end would be necessary to help them out. Because where else are they gonna play?
I, 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 to a certain extent, I agree, and I will be willing to support your initiative and pray, and I pray that nothing happens. But giving them an opportunity to fulfill their obligation to visit it too with understanding that the city got some really serious problems that's still reaching them all before and Saturday with this issue.
I agree.
And it also could be some fines incurred if the contract is already been signed.
Right. And we want to make sure that they have a certain amount of liability coverage to ensure safety. I would advise to go ahead and move forward with that immediately. We can see we can't make a decision on that tomorrow if possible. But again, I'm, I'm with you on the state of the stadium. But we start, you know, taking opportunities away from folks again. One time, gives them a little more time to figure out whether opportunities are available to them. They may be able to work with a local school. Who knows?
I don't think we're looking at you categorize as you believe with this private invention, you know?
Well, it's always, whoever we donate something to, anybody, whether it's football fields, baseball fields, buildings, whatever.
We donate to everybody.
Well, we recently gave up something for no fee. So that was my point.
Counselor, only...
If we want to be fee-based, let's be fee-based. I'm charged every...
Just like you gave the Black Belt to have, waiting here, waiting on the contract. Remember, Black Belt holds to have ten, ten events at their amphitheater and not paying a penny?
I don't think that was the case, Mrs.
No, no, I'm just saying.
But they didn't actually get the award, so it was a moot point anyway. Never happened.
I'm just saying like...
My point is strictly this. Not that Jubilee, you guys get caught on Jubilee, that's a shame. Because we're not talking about Jubilee specifically, but we get locked into that mindset. What I'm talking about is, we either gonna charge people to use our facilities or we're not. And that's why I think we have to define our category and what we're gonna do here. What are we gonna do? We gonna charge somebody to use our facilities or not? That's the question. We want to work with them to help them out? Fine. I'm all for working with people to help them out. If there's any kind of services the city offers in exchange for using our building, that's fine too. But my point is, we need to figure out what we're gonna do and stick with it from here on out. So it's a uniform policy toward our buildings. That's my point. Independent of who uses it. I'm not talking about...
I said Attorney Madison.
My last question. And prior to that, we don't make decisions on the contract fifth coming up when the council not even doing anything. We are leaders representing the city of Selma. You don't, I understand where you're coming from. The game is, but...
But to Attorney Madison's defense, that contract was given prior to November.
Yeah, it wasn't Attorney Madison's, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't where we are, where we gotta be.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna do whatever is lawful, the council directs me to.
Just find out how much we need in insurance for Saturday. And then if we want to move forward tomorrow, we can. If not, we don't have to. We turn for two bucks.
You recommended P.
Get our gate receipt out of that, turn two dollars. You know? I mean, I'm willing to work, man. Let's figure out something.
Let me ask you a question, Attorney.
Yes, sir.
I'm going back to this resolution about the chief salaries.
Yes.
Is that, is that gonna be retroactive when Chief Fullfoot was voting in the N S T? Are they not gonna back pay him his, his payment? It has to.
It has to. It has to.
That's up to the council.
Yeah, so... Regular, yeah, yeah. I'm just, I'm just asking.
Can we say that for, can we say that for the record tomorrow night?
We put that in the consent. What kind of... Make us forget you that conversation.
Oh, I was asking since we're giving out raises, couldn't you consider putting my, my raise included on the consent agenda? I would like to go up to the office.
I don't like it. I'm just afraid.
That's right. The way you work. Yeah, it worked. It traded the city. When you look at the comparison, the qualifications, as well as considering the meetings we had and found out I was doing clerk job as well, so...
I want to get each other to do the side and sell your story.
See, I heard so.
I, I have. Each one. That's why I brought it back up. Since it's going up, consider just about the other department handles.
Mr. President, I don't want to lose this because I think at least hold our employee a decent discussion about our issues. What are you, what amount are you asking?
Well, when you look at the market for finance directions, it, it with, in this market and this size, it's probably in the nine to a hundred range. I have a master's degree, ten years of experience in large government capacity, MBA. And additionally, as we discussed in a private meeting, you all know that I have been carrying on of, with other, other, some of the positions as you all have set forth that was designed for the clerk, for the city treasurer.
Share, share with those.
I have, I was probably only about three people on this that I haven't had a private conversation with. I don't know we had, but we did discuss that aside by conversation and come back to the table.
Yes, you did talk to me about it.
The final item on my list of items is a range master contract for former Chief John Brock at the request of, I believe, Chief Fullfoot. And I think the council has already approved this. I'm not sure about that vote. You have not, well, then that's, that, that contract is submitted for your consideration.
Fire instructor, also. This is something that Chief...
It's firearm safety and qualification. And he's, I believe, I don't know if he's the only qualified range master, but he is a qualified range master.
Gibson was doing that duty, but you know, he was in an accident.
Was it Hallen, you said, the department, who was the same thing?
Who's that?
Bill Hallen. You're not with the sheriff.
You said Bill Hallen?
No, because I know, what's the name? Officer Gibson was over there, was over the fire branch. But you know, that's when he had that accident.
I would suggest you pass this contract out to get us time to narrow it down.
I'm sorry. I just did.
We need to look at this.
I got one for the...
Do you have a counsel?
I got one for the chief and the fire chief.
Just one for John, John Brock also.
He just passed it out.
I just passed it out.
Counselor, counsel.
I have a question on this contract. I understand that, I know our attorney is, is passing us out the contract, but are you on the public safety, are you aware of some of these things here that he's...
No, I'm not. But once again, this contract was given to, prior to Attorney Madison coming on. I've never seen the contract. This is my first time seeing it. I just heard conversation with the, with Chief Fullfoot. And, and I asked who was the fire instructor for the STD. And that's when he informed me that it was Officer Gibson who was in an accident. So...
And that's exactly what I heard, Mr. President. And the operative sections or portions of the contract are who obviously is engaged in it. John, John Brock was said Selma, Selma Police Department for master, range master handgun, firearms, general training, weapon safety, training for qualification purposes for a Selma Police Department, trainees and officers. Terminated contract, I asked Chief Fullfoot concerning that very issue, how long was he gonna need? He says he wasn't sure about the recuperation period, a rehabilitation period for Officer Gibson. So I said, "Well, give me your best case." I said, "Would three to six months make sense?" He said, "Yeah." So we can't put three to six months in the contract. We need a definite term. I said, "Well, let's go with the," I suggested we go with the outside term of six months and the parties can mutually agree to terminate the contract if not needed that long.
I think that'll probably be fair because he has to have a complete hip replacement. He's pretty big though.
I think that's a reasonable contract, Mr. President, but it's on the side.
And also I think we have to... At the rate of twenty hours per hour for a minimum of twenty hours per week.
And I think it's mandatory that you have to be able to shoot. Am I correct?
Hopefully straight.
Straight, yeah. So I think this would be...
You have to have qualified person.
Qualified person.
To teach, to teach that safety and qualification course.
Okay, prior to the last council meeting when we had a contractor stating by Green is to come on, has that contract proceeded to start yet? Has he, has he, has he came on yet? You know, we bought a contract. We was talking about Green being coming on. Has he came on yet?
I've got the contract right here. Are you asking me that he started? Are you asking, are you asking, are you asking if he started working? The answer I got was as of Friday before last, yes.
Yes, already he's started.
Yes, Friday before last.
And that contract, that council is a war mouth.
That's what...
For Green?
His move came back with us.
I mean, he have it now.
That's what I'm saying, but... That's what I'm saying, but he was.
I need the 3500, come here, come to mine.
Sixteen hundred dollars bi-weekly, so 3200 dollars a month. We discussed that in the council session.
I think we talked about it, he was going over another credit work when he was running the chief.
And.
So. No, I think we had come back, we didn't have.
You said come back.
We didn't have a sick price.
Price.
Okay.
So, can I ask a question? I'm just asking, what do you do? Why do you need a consult? I'm just asking, I, I, I'm not.
From our understanding, it was some things that the chief, which Chief Forford asked about. There are some things also that we see.
Attorney Madison.
Chief Green started, and he definitely needed to work with the chief to finalize some things. Yeah. But it was a request of Chief Forford.
Okay, that's better. Although I did not vote for this chief, I fully support him, and I think he should stand behind and support whatever his request is within our means. If he suggested he's a range master and he recommended a former chief, I think that's, at least we can do a support. The contract to bring a former chief, Green that come here to continue to shape and mold him and become, I guess, for lack of a better term, self-sufficient without the ease of others depending upon his own talents against the rest of the city. Once again, I think we need to be supportive of what the chief was requesting. Now, another thing, this 20 dollars an hour, getting back to that contract, I should have asked before. What line item is that coming out? Did the chief share that with you?
No, he did not, and I asked him, I asked him for an amount of rate of pay. I did not discuss the funding source for that rate of pay.
Could you find out what line item that that is coming from and have him share that with Ms. Wayne, so she can be aware as to how he proposed to finance these supportive measures that we are supporting, and then she'll report back to us as to what the highest the file I call.
This will be.
You have to have both contracts, right?
I text him.
Okay.
But didn't you just tell us that the officer that got injured, wasn't he holding this, this title?
That was part of the.
That was, I'm saying, but didn't you tell us that this officer, that you giving this to one, somebody, Brock, and it was part of the other officer title that he carried? So was he getting, I just want to, basically, before I vote on anything, I have a right to ask this question. Was he getting the 20 dollar per hour based on?
I can't say.
So how long was it going to be?
Twenty.
He said six months.
He said up to six months.
To six months, he's going to get.
Twenty-first day of February, ninety days.
Yeah.
Twenty-first day of February, 2020, to twenty-first day of May, 2020.
So, so we are bringing on, the citizens of Selvin, when tomorrow, they were quite sure it would be in the paper. We are bringing on, we bringing on two, two more, two more officers to come on to help with this police problem. We're bringing on John T. Brock. He will be doing a special, what, what's that?
Right, but that's mandated.
I know it's mandated, what you're saying, but.
Range master.
Range, range master.
Armed training and qualification.
Okay, so he is taking the other officer title, part of his title.
Officer Gibson.
Yes, part, well, Officer Gibson has more than one title, so, you know what I'm saying? So he's taking part of Officer.
That part of his responsibilities, yes.
Okay, okay, so this is very important. All right, and then we'll bring it on, what we have already brought on, which we're just not getting the contract where we decided to find out how much Green was going to get paid, which you already say that Green has already began work. So now we'll have to give this vote tomorrow to vote on the salary we agreeing on that Green would get paid.
Yes. Well, you already agreed on the salary, there was no vote.
Yeah, we never voted on it, you know, we had said to come back.
No.
We said for, for them to come back, to meet and come back with.
My point was to the discussion of office salary, that took place, but no vote.
Okay, so we will be taking the vote on this, our decision to vote on this tomorrow?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, one more question. With this salary we agreeing to pay for Green to be paid, do we know where this salary is going to come out, where this funding is going to come out from?
I was just asked to find out that, Councilwoman Thomas. I do not know, I was just asked to find out along with the line item for the payment to Chief Brock.
Okay, so we have to see where both of these salaries are going to come out of what account, line item, that we're going to pay these people.
And I should, if I can get that information tonight from the chief, I can call him tonight, but he may not have that information at his fingertips. But I should be able to find out in the morning. I should be able to find out in the morning.
Major, yeah, we had a chance to get that letter out to our good citizen regarding.
The cops?
Yes, that was, yeah.
No.
We got it, is it getting closer or are we?
Yes, yes, I was close enough. Tomorrow, I'll go, Mr.
Great, thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
Attorney, this was part of getting part of my attention about this Brock contract. It should be not to exceed what the United does, across the dollar amount.
Yeah, on what the contract is designed, it says about the days, minimum 20 hours. It should not exceed amount, because I wouldn't know really what the budget for. If you're saying minimum 20 hours, so that mean he can work.
As opposed to maximum?
A maximum.
Right, a maximum, and then I will have, so.
I think, I think that might actually be my type of, because it should have been a maximum of 20 hours per week, not to exceed a maximum 20 hours per week. Yeah, I'll make that a adjustment. I think that's my, I think that's my, yeah. Because we, when I talked to Chief Forford, I asked, how, how long is he going to work, how many hours? And he told me 20 hours.
A week, is it?
20 hours per week maximum, I believe.
Maximum 20 hours.
I probably mistaken the broke.
Maximum 20 hours.
Minimum could mean he could work any number.
Right.
So it should be 20 hours maximum. I'll make that correction, and I made that notation right now.
Any other, anything else, Attorney?
Just the Councilwoman's contract.
Got one, Attorney.
No, I said I got one more question I wanted to ask. Will, will we know before we vote on this, these two contracts by tomorrow, what line item that this, that this salary is going to come out?
My goal is to find out before council meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, I just texted.
Okay.
And that's my goal, to find out before council meeting.
Yeah.
I might have been asking you a tour of a question. I think the lack of being able to fill the 55 slots in the police department is whether they're ever able to use that money that's just sitting there. So I would imagine that's probably what we asked, but you have to ask a question to hear.
Because I know in the past, that's what we, the slots, but.
Well, you know, the only thing, me, I'm talking about me. I'd like to know, before I give a vote, I want to know where is this money coming out of? Since we, we have so much, there's a lot of other things that are, that are needed, but I really would like to know where these accounts that have come.
I think any question that is a pertinent question, completely, completely pertinent.
Well, you got to know stuff when you vote on different vote counts, you put it there.
So hopefully, you'll check when tomorrow, I text tomorrow, so, so this one we vote for, we'll probably have.
And I'm not going to wait tomorrow to ask you.
I just texted tomorrow.
I'm going, you already did.
All right, and other?
Councilwoman's contract.
The table?
The, the, how to. Ward seven.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I have a correction, because there's a misstatement toward five, four and five up there at the top, second, second and third paragraph. That's, that's going to have to be deleted, I'll have to come back and reassure the council before you vote on it tomorrow that I made that correction.
We're just putting on the center agenda.
Yeah.
With the needed correction, yes.
Anything, you said something about that vapor ordinance issue now?
I've, I've done research, I haven't drafted, gotten anywhere close to drafting an ordinance, but I've done research on vaping artists, found a website that gives me the vaping artists across the 50 states of the United States. And I zeroed in on Alabama, obviously, because that's where we are. The others are just for contrast and comparison, they're not going to have full face, full force and effect of the way they're bought here in Alabama. But it's good to know what other municipalities, other states are doing. What it's going to boil down to is basically the same controls as far tobacco, of which, chief among which is age, age-related, who should have access to that product to begin with, health issues, and tax issues. That's, that's, those are the three keys, age, health, and tax issues.
Well, I kind of figured you were most interested.
Appreciate you leading with the health.
Well, I'm trying to be eclectic in my approach to, to what to present to the council, because you have the right to decide that you need to be fully informed, I would hope. And, and the best decisions made are always made when you have the best information. But that's, that's, those are the prime factors in coming up with an ordinance, and obviously has to track or not conflict with state, any state statute. That's why I got the 50 states information, not pulled down, but looked at some of it. And I pulled down Alabama statutes, they're not a plethora of statutes, but there's enough that you need to know what they are, so that you don't pass anything in direct contravention of those state statutes.
Mobile just recently did theirs, I think, and was where I had read about it, that's what I was wondering.
I can give a call. I didn't, I didn't check with their artists specifically, but I'm from Mobile, you don't have any trouble, you don't have any trouble referring to what they're doing in Mobile.
Yeah, please, that's, that's the one that came to mind anyway with this concept of.
It makes sense. What I usually like to do as a rule of thumb is try to compare and contrast prospective artists with like municipalities first.
Right.
Basically, similar size in the Black Belt of Huntsville, not out of the Black Belt, but basically size, class, and, and then I go with the larger cities and the smaller cities as outliers to give you an example of what they're doing in Birmingham, Montgomery, Mobile, Huntsville, as well as what they're doing in Pritchett or Oppo, Andalusia, or other smaller cities.
Before I go, Councilwoman Thomas, have you had opportunity to draft that letter about that business over, owing us so much tax?
About what?
That business we talked about, owing the legal taxes.
The legal taxes?
You know, the business that I told you about.
I, we had one that I dealt with last week, but I don't know if it's the same one. This was on Highland.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've actually talked to the owner, and I've told the owner what we expect in the way of payment. She wanted to negotiate down, I negotiated up.
They've been negotiating.
She wanted to negotiate down, I negotiated up.
Yes, they've been, they've been negotiating for the last.
Yeah.
So give me the contract, Attorney.
I actually talked, spoke with her over the telephone, I didn't write her yet. I didn't write her. We actually talked over the telephone, and, and I can, you want a letter to her saying, you owe this again, and then pay it? I can do that too.
I said I want you to do a research on Attorney Madison. I want you to find out, an ordinance was done in 2001 with discretionary, and I'm quite sure that's like from.
Discretionary funds?
Yes, but I want you, I know there's some, got been some amendment changes in there. Could you do that, do that research up for me?
You want me to find out what about the discretionary funds?
Okay.
What change, what change, what amendments that have been to that ordinance?
Yes, I know, I'm quite sure there has been some.
2001 city settlement.
Yes. The amendments behind, attached behind that up to now.
What amendments have taken place?
Yes, from the origin in 2001.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Attorney? I think also to Attorney, this line number five, Councilwoman Thomas and Councilman Randolph, ask you about the 15 passenger van. The 15 passenger van, I ask you about.
My information, the information I got after doing some preliminary checking was that the van was on the Public Works property, just not in plain view of the street, somewhere inside the fenced-in area.
I went, I didn't see it, maybe I.
It's not in here, I think.
I didn't go to the lot.
I didn't.
I didn't go to the lot and look.
Yeah.
Councilmembers, I was told the van was inside the fenced-in area of the Public Works property, just not in plain sight of the street.
Well, when it, when it, if an accident occurred.
They ain't no police report.
You have to do a report after all.
I understand.
And also, it should have reported to our attorney.
Do you want me to find out why an accident report wasn't there?
Yeah.
I think, I think the best course of action, Attorney, is if you're going to field trip tomorrow, to see if that van is out there in Public Works parking lot, is the same.
Trying to get.
How would I know which van I'm looking for?
Well, only one 15.
The Y15.
Only one 15 passenger van.
The only one 15 passenger van the city owns or has owned.
And have an emblem on it.
On the door.
Yeah, see.
City tag.
Yeah, they got a city tag. Now, man, but also, with that being, we had, you had to fill out a form, it's taken to drive. So I want to know who the last driver was, Susan. You know who the last?
Last time when they had that playoff for the, when Ben Iver was here? You know, they had, used it to take their kids to, they had this playoff, it was in a playoff. And they used the 15 passenger van then. And from that time on, the 15 passenger van was, it was out there, but it just disappeared after that. You didn't see it anymore, and I was always wondering where was it? To the time when me and Susan was supposed to plan, we was going to do like, get together and have like, when tourists come to the town, that we was going to take them to Lowes County to the interpreter center. And that's when we noticed, where's, where's the van? And, but if the van, it was hit out front in that city property, look like Henry said that, they said somebody drunk hit it. Okay, if you knew somebody drunk hit the passenger van, why there was a police report? And why was it, it's a city property? Why wasn't it, it was filed on insurance? It disappeared and it's been gone for a long time, so that's kind of strange.
Mr. President, that's, that's been hot on this issue, because that's, that is, that is bad. I don't think no drunk driver hit no van, because how you know, how you know drunk driver hit? Nobody called the police? There's nothing in the police department saying that somebody. But we need to come up with a policy on our, on our victims. Because when the, when the, when the police chief, you know, when he was on his mess, and he ran and towed out our vehicle, we never did get nothing on that. So anytime a victim get towed out with the city vehicle, we need to know, get notified. If something come from either office.
The clerk is the one supposed to be the one.
But we, we ain't getting nothing, so that's not right. But we, we ain't, we ain't getting that, so that's not right for, uh, our victims, victims to get towed out. Even, uh, even with the police officer vehicle, I know it got towed out, but we ain't getting that on that. We ain't no insurance paid on that, you know? Uh, so it, it's, it's, we gonna have to draft some, uh, 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 ordinance or something that, that detail, uh, of wreck vehicles in the city in an accident.
Can you do, can you draw somebody?
Normally, normally, normally you would have an accident incident report, a police report, an insurance claim filed, normally. If those aren't standard procedure, I would most likely recommend that they be incorporated as standard procedure. In, in event of a property casualty loss to any city property, any city property, not just.
Any city what condition it's torn.
But, but those three are basic to any investigation or claim that was made to an insurance company. You have to show that you did something to verify what happened, how it happened, when it happened, as much as you care about how it happened. And if you don't have it, then right, it didn't exist.
Yeah, so I might, I might have another question. When, uh, the chief told out the vehicle on Howard Hater, did we have to get a check for that vehicle?
I don't have a recollection, you know, I'd be in and out of office, so you might go check the clerk to verify. The clerk knows it.
About this, you can check with Mr. Pete, you can call him too?
Cause, man, there's some, there's some vicious stuff going on with accident right here. I believe somebody parking the money. And I'll just take it, take it on the counter. It's my, blame it on my medication.
Or, or lack that up.
It's a long call, man. No, I'm, I'm serious, y'all. It's, 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 this is, this is a big problem with, with our, uh, this city property altogether.
Serious problem.
So, you're going to draft some attorney?
Excuse me?
You can draft us something, there's no, no policy or something?
Well, I would check first to see if there is.
We already, we already have a policy in place, though, but.
Well, well, what I'm saying is if you have a policy in place, it needs to be enforced.
I don't, we got ban policy in place.
Yeah, if, if there's one in place, if there's, if there's no policy in place, I would recommend a policy that includes when there's a casualty loss, property loss, or damage, an accident slash incident report, a police report, and an insurance claim.
That's common sense, though.
Yeah.
Common sense, yeah, common sense.
But I don't know that that's not in existence is what I'm saying. My first charge would be to see if it exists, to see if it exists, any, any of all of those things.
I think we did one when, for attorney, remember when, when, when I was in there in that position, uh, dealing with the, uh, the vehicles? Remember we did a policy, uh, Attorney Nunn had did it, but did a, I think it was a, yeah, we did one. It's one in place.
It's a different situation in that it was a parked vehicle, nobody had checked it out, it was parked on the city property, and then it disappeared.
Yes, I know in the past, the policy that we had was whenever you check out a vehicle, you have to take a picture of your phone ID, if I'm not mistaken. You went through the, what, clerk office, I think it was, you had to sign it off, uh, the time that you left, or the time to return.
And another thing, if a drunk driver hit it in front of Broad Street, we got two cameras in front of it, sitting on one down the street. You can't tell me somebody hit that van and the camera ain't pick it up. Well, if it was shooting at the, at the Savage Lot, it's, the only white fifteen passenger van the city has, and it has a trailer hitch, uh, attached to it. So, if you don't have a holding light to look for, then it's not happening, and you start looking downstairs.
So, we have to file a claim.
Also too, Attorney, can you get the van number from the court to make sure?
She says she's a legal.
Insurance company now.
Van number on the van? Yeah, sure. Mr. Pete, if, if it's available, I'll give. Uh, Mr., Mr. President, there's one other thing you already covered, that was with the first individual speaker before you when I came in, uh, the pilgrimage. Uh, you, you, would you reiterate what you had asked for me to do? I know, I know.
Okay, basically, I just would have this, uh, this fellow to drop a memo to the mayor, uh, Miss Davis to give it to you. And you can just deliver it.
You want Miss Davis?
No, I'm gonna have this, uh, draft, she'll give it to you.
So, I, so, so my responsibilities are null and void at this point. That's all I did, I need to know. That's it as far as my report's concerned.
Any other questions?
Before we move on, should I have a couple inquiry questions? Cause Ms. Wade might be in the help in this issue. Officer, you're not, but I've seen the report today, it shows, you always see a license over a renewal report. Uh, I'm kinda confused because it shows a renewal balance. It shows a deductible charge of all the capital that's zero. And the balance is still, they haven't changed. Uh, what, what is the significance of this, uh, in that capital?
Just average it out. I think if it's, if it's, uh, if it's zero, I don't think they have paid it. Based, that's the way I'm gonna be there.
Yeah.
It's money received or some money not received?
Yeah, it's not received.
So, all these people owe us all this money?
Yes, based on.
Would have already sent a money?
Uh, they just forwarded, I forwarded them the information today because, you know, they had until February to, uh, get their, uh, business license.
Put you forward to us a copy, what you said there?
No, I just said the same, I didn't.
You said that, okay, could you let us know what their response was?
Okay, I just did it today.
Uh, the other question, Ms. Wade, you may or may not know.
Yes, sir.
How much money have any of the generation of the Jubilee?
I asked her that, I saw.
Uh, that would be a question for the tax collector, she handles all of that, so when she comes to the next meeting, then she can give you.
It was twenty-six hundred, it was on the email.
It was twenty-six hundred?
Yeah, I believe it was on the email, I'm sure.
On who email?
On who email?
I.
The email received from, uh.
Yeah, I asked, I asked her to, I asked her to email it to us, they emailed everything. I think it's, I, I forwarded it to you.
I don't have none, I was pretty. But can you send it?
If I, if I didn't ask a question.
It says.
I didn't send it.
It says, uh, taking report blah, 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 note revenue collection for the twenty-twenty Jubilee event totaling twenty-six hundred dollars, a total of fifty-two vendors.
So, how do you, how do you get that?
It was on the email sent from, uh, the mayor's office, I guess? Office of the mayor, I don't know what the email address is, they just seem to change.
And well, they ain't, they ain't, they, I haven't seen nothing, that's something new.
They sent it to everyone.
I got this one, I got this one at, uh, what, quarter afternoon this morning, I guess?
I don't have it, I don't, I didn't even.
I don't know.
Cause I just looked at it in the afternoon before I left.
Well, can you email it to me, since you have it?
Yeah, we all have it.
I don't have it.
I don't have it.
Jay, they got you at that, is your, your email address thirty-seven?
That's, it's sixteen.
It's got the long email address.
I forwarded it to you.
It forwarded it, that's right.
My list is right.
And then I sent my new email out to everybody.
Did anybody go around and, and, uh, on the streets to check, uh, the minutes? Cause I was seeing folks all down Broad Street and stuff.
They ain't had nobody to check it.
We, we just a little unnecessary.
No one came out to check for anything. I was out in Jubilee, I, I did, nobody, they didn't check on, they didn't check anything. Then we had some complaints, citizens were calling from when they got back home, uh, and I was asking them, how did they end up with my number? They didn't know them. They, they called, was talking about, I said, well, we not, we, the city, we don't, we're not open to the Jubilee, that's a different direction you have to go and talk to about. They were complaining about the, uh, the way the, some of the vendors and some of the areas in the, in, in the city was, and, and I told them, you have to, uh, you wanna talk, write a letter to the mayor, and then write a letter to, uh, the person that cares the Jubilee. I said, right now, I can't explain to you anything about that.
Keep in mind now, we tried to streamline that process that Friday, where we met and we asked the tax collector to come up, never came up.
Never.
But we did try to streamline that process, and the vendor was coming from the tax collector's office, so that was the missing piece.
And then they were upset, they said some group had alcohol, and I said, I don't know about that, you know?
Well, Mr. President, if Earl called, there was a recommendation by the committee.
We did.
And they said there would be no vendors outside of the, per se of the Jubilee.
Yep.
And if there were vendors that had set up, they would be, uh, shut down immediately.
Wouldn't happen that.
Of course, if that, if you had vendors, as I hear that you guys say, I, I just wasn't able to get out that weekend, unfortunately, I say, but, but it's true. But if there, there was a number of vendors that were set up, then the question remained, did the city go around trying to get vendors free from there? First of all, they should have went around and shut them down.
They wouldn't have.
That's from what they said before, and they told us they were gonna do that.
They should have, they should have set them down. And if the city didn't come and forced their own rules, then this city's beginning to get a reputation. The cities make rules and ordinances, but there's no enforcement. And when you have that reputation, then your city's gonna go to hell in a handbasket, and I'm tired of setting these rules. I'm tired of making these laws. Especially this garbage situation. Some people need to be behind bars, the way they attract this city. And I understand why they're trashy because there's no enforcement. We gotta do a better job, y'all.
I know, I know, I know the county just had a code enforcement office.
And Mrs., uh, Mrs. Baggy Drake was here today, same thing, she, she's very concerned, you know, they can't move forward without code enforcement, what they're trying to do.
Nobody can.
Nobody, and, uh, you know, it's, it's annoying when you have someone to go downstairs to the mayor office trying to do something for the city, and she couldn't get in, she, she was highly, you know, was, she couldn't get in, so she couldn't get in.
Okay. I'll miss you, I'll forward you all that.
Let, let us know what Ms. Lewis said about the court.
About the what?
About, with any.
Vendors in.
Outside, vendors outside the Jubilee. And they wanna take it up.
She didn't come home, with nobody from the city.
It's in that report, I have it for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, to the, uh, business artists, uh, public health concern, we know we have coronavirus going around, and I met with the, uh, the CEO, uh, Mr. David from the, uh, Pansville. We're looking at probably having a public safety meeting that he can give us some information, on some things that we need to be, uh, cautious about. So, I would hopefully you can help us, you know, pass the word and also some public service announcements. And I wanna ask the council also, if we can go ahead and on going record and vote in each one of our public buildings to have a.
What you call it?
Hand sanitizer.
Hand sanitizer.
Pure air.
Yeah, from, uh, hanging from, make sure we have it placed in all our public buildings.
As well as soap and.
Soap and, paper towels and all of that.
From the base, they sent it down, down on the.
Yeah, to make sure that we have it in all our public buildings. Uh, since this is twenty-twenty, I'm gonna ask Councilman Bolley.
Yes.
We did go to pass twenty-five hundred dollars to get some literature, put up some balance. If you can help with that, if you ever.
Yeah, there's tons of stuff all over the website, so we can, we can look through what they have to offer us, and from their advantage, wanting that we need to make some custom adjustments we can.
Okay, yeah.
Can I?
With your marketing skills.
Oh, yeah, that's, I have to put a lot to bear on this one.
Uh, basically what we do.
Since this has got all kinds of stuff out there.
So, we go ahead and, go ahead and order some balance, and we can put them around here, and also put them at the main thoroughfares throughout the city.
Now, you guys have a banner in mind there, Mr. President, four by eight, alright?
So, the tax, what, what if twenty-five hundred come in?
Twenty-five hundred, it was coming, I can't remember where you located it.
Tour?
Tours, uh, yeah, uh, since twenty-twenty.
Shouldn't cost even close to that.
It shouldn't even cost. We just, we just said twenty-five hundred, so we may be, uh, uh.
Like about a hundred, a hundred dollars a banner, maybe?
About a hundred dollars a banner, maybe about, full of five hundred dollars, we may be, uh, uh, putting it throughout the main thoroughfares and also, uh, putting it, putting some balance, uh, in the council chamber. And outside, I've talked with the radio stations that they're willing to, a lot of council members to come on, do public service announcements, encouraging everyone to be careful there.
Mr. President, if, if, if Vietnam had put out a PSA, I saw it several times. And, cause these are the same people that are always with the war case, but according to the report, we are supposed to be a friendly nation now. But Vietnam hasn't given a rest of the PSA about Corona's, and if you get a chance, if you have one, I highly recommend that you do.
Okay, I do have an email that, uh, received some emails, cause I know with the community college, we got a workshop on, and, uh, I received, so. Emails to us that, and also, we have a, a workshop from last week.
And I guess tomorrow today, just cause it was happening more times than it would be in the long term.
That's true. But the funny thing about it, why you have to name it after some alcohol?
Corona.
Corona. I could drink.
Well, that's one way to quit it from, stop it from drinking. Y'all's a woman, so.
Uh, I had, I, I, two items I wanted to put on the agenda, and it's very important to.
That's why I said, you never said, you never told us, so we got it to you, so.
Mm-hmm, but I, uh, I had two that I wanted to add, but you never, you didn't ask tonight if it was anything wanted to be added.
Oh, I just asked the email, the email. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, one is very important, uh, that our city government, uh, when people come into our building, the condition, the cleanliness in, uh, of our city property is, is, uh, I gave you before the last council meeting that I, I, uh, contract with Ms. Rosie, will clean all of the city property. Uh, as any of the council people decided, uh, discussed, uh, we need to because of our elevator is, is filthy, is, 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 from the ladies bathrooms, of some of the places that we go into, uh, and some of the, uh, entering into the building, the carpet and stuff. It's a lot of things that I understand that we had Rashin, uh, helping out, but Rashin cannot keep this city government building up. He cannot clean this whole entire building. And we also, I had made this statement that we would sit, we would wait to see what, uh, the mayor would do with some of our city property, which we have not, uh, never, we haven't seen it being moved forward yet. So, I'm saying, uh, what does this pack, this county, uh, council body think about our, about city government building that people come into every day, about the cleansing?
We have a conference, you said.
Uh-huh, I passed it out to everyone, I gave everybody a copy of it, thank you. I gave everybody a copy of this, and I think she used, didn't she used to do the work for the, uh, some of the city?
Yeah, she worked on, I think, I think that, the turks, so I think she's keeping that, if I'm not mistaken.
I know.
Rose Smith. Yeah. You know, I haven't, so, uh, uh, yeah, I think she did work with the interpreters, if I'm not mistaken. Am I right, Ms. Wade? And what else?
Yeah, contract with interpreters.
That's on, that's on the bill?
Rosely.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and, and we.
It's on the bill?
And that's why I gave you.
She did a good job?
Yeah. And that's why I was telling us, you know, we have people coming in and visitors coming in every day, and you know, this building needs to be cleaned. This building has really been cleaned over almost, I don't know, what, a year and something? And we have, we still have our leaking problem, you know, no one comes from the department, uh, talking about moving forward. We sent a list, we talked about the traffic light, no one says, no one won't even move forward changing the boxes out. You know, we said day-to-day operation, we allowing the mayor to, to make his decision of doing these things, and the city lights, and every time we turn around, another light is going out. So, um, I ask you to send an email to him to find out, uh, before we start moving, uh, trying to keep our city going, uh, give us a, a leeway on, are they going to put the boxes up so we can have these lights fixed, these lights keep going out on the street corner?
They probably are stating the deal before that happens.
Well, as, as, uh, we are elected officials for the city of Selmo, and public safety is the number one issue. And we have waited and waited, uh, to, this is the third month, March. And, uh, you can't continue to, to let our city just die, not, not move forward with the lights and other things, you know, uh, that we have our facilities, like, uh, Councilman Shaw said, that, uh, the recreation, the park out there. It's, it's sad that it came to this, that there's a lot, I've been out there, it just, uh, it's a lot that, uh, we're losing with our, come to our city property, we need to, uh, come to a concei- concession on moving forward, we're doing what we need to do, public safety, those lights. come to a conce, a concession on moving forward, we're doing what we need to do, public safety, those lights, I'm telling you, the, I've seen an accident, where people waiting, you know, you got the light blanked off, and you trying to see one side caution, the other side red, you don't know which one we all want to go, so, you know, we shouldn't have that. I think we need to, we need to, we done waited long enough, time enough, uh, to see what's the department is, Steven was gonna move forward. We didn't just pay for boxes just to sit up out at public work, if they're still there, so, you know, that's ten boxes that we paid for, to remove them before, have somebody come in.
Do you know, go ahead, Councilman.
And, uh, speaking of lights, I don't, we, we have a light for us, or?
No, you have to have a, uh, what doesn't happen is, Mr. Lee there has, has repaired those lights, them are old stuff, he even repaired them to, it's no, it's no more hope. You have to change those boxes out, those boxes are nineteen-fifty, nineteen-sixty boxes.
Yeah, uh, he was asking, on, uh, Madison Bay Road. The timing got to be off on them lights, because one turn red, the other turn green at the same time.
And see, he been.
And I, I saw a bag right there.
Yeah, but Mr. Lee there been going out there, I've seen him out there, uh, trying to, to repair them through the box, but when the boxes are old like that, this city has repaired any boxes in a, like, in a, a, a resident area, but it's called the state take care of there, they're putting up new boxes, new lights and stuff. So it's up to us, and we have to get this here to taken care of in our area. Well, we do, we have a man out of Birmingham, that's why I was waiting to see, was the mayor on that, you know, we said in respect, he, this is a new year, and if we gonna, was gonna move forward, we just sit back and wait and see what's, uh, the department of public work was gonna move on getting these boxes put up. And they ha, and they have, well, we waited, but they haven't, uh, haven't began yet, so we're trying to see, uh, we need to get that taken care of.
Alright, and last business argument for me, it's RDS, their contract would be up in April, because I know last time, we voted, it would be up a year, based on a year-by-year basis, uh, but the contract would be up in the end of April, and I asked them to go ahead and submit the contract, and Attorney Madison let you approve it before we vote on it. Uh, I guess we probably could just vote on it about the next, I mean, the first council meeting in April, because the comment, I mean, the contract, uh, terminates at, I think, the end of the month, in April.
It probably, I haven't seen it, but I'm like, this is the end of April, end of April, so you definitely want to have some game plan the first of the month. End of, end of, uh, this month, first of April.
Okay, yes, but I definitely get it to you, they're supposed to email it at ten this week, and after I receive it, I forward it to the council members, and also, uh, let you look over it. Because it's gonna include tobacco tax, sales tax, entertainment tax, and all of the above.
Vaping.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully, Councilwoman Thomas.
How do I get, uh, have we came to the conclusion of someone going out checking the business license, and seeing, uh, that they're updated, and, uh, you know, I told you, I, I need this alcohol fee removed.
Well, what you basically need to do far as your very report, is get what you need, find out how many complaints that, that particular business.
Well, we already did that, you know, while I'm. We only had so many of.
I know, but have he given to you the complaint?
Not yet, he said he's gonna give it.
That's why, that's why we stopped.
And my concern is because, uh, we have, uh, we have children. And then we have, we have our children going that way, and this is in so many miles of the school, it's in my, it's in my area, we have children go there every day, in and out, and, uh, I just, just feel like that, uh, they can't do what they want to do, alcohol, that kind of alcohol should not be up, being up seeing, and they don't have alcohol license, liquor license.
They don't have beer license?
They got beer and wine license.
But they sell it, they're liquor, hard liquor?
Yeah, they got hard liquor, and that's why I'm not concerned.
If I had somebody like that in my room, I'd be like Elliot Des, with the police department shutting it down.
I did, I went to.
They don't have license, shut it down.
Well, I went to, I went to the chief, and he told me that he was gonna pull up some information, but I want the alcohol off the shelf, so this is why I'm saying, the alcohol need to come down. I told him it needs to come down.
Well, that's grounds enough not to come down, shut it down. But just wait till the chief, because, uh, we had a talk with him, and, uh, they go ahead and just put this, put the brush lock on.
Uh, Mr. President, I, your discussions just now triggered, uh, my thought process, someone has contacted me from Dollar General, about the old writing store at Highland and Broad, um, asking, A, if I knew if it ever had a liquor license, and B, what, what alcohol, and, they were thinking wine and beer, to be sold, nothing consumed on premises, obviously, but they were thinking it might have had a wine and beer license, I told them I didn't know, I, I, I could find out, but I didn't know.
I think it, I think, what's that writing?
Yeah, and, and the reasons for that is.
It has to face in front of the same road, you gotta change ordinance, so they have to front the same road, so I don't know if this is applicable in that case, remember when the ordinance changed?
Well, bottom line, bottom line, Councilman, off his, Dollar General's thinking about purchasing the building, and they've got a ready, willing, and able seller, apparently, I, I even asked that. Who the guy who called me was representing, he didn't want to tell me, but I told him, I, I kind of made it clear, I would talk to him, he would tell me that it was represented. Well, he did, he did, and he said it's a, it's a private individual, but Dollar General is the one interested in wanting to purchase the building, and they want to know if they could sell wine and beer out of it. I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
I tired of Dollar General's myself.
All right, uh, also, I received a letter from the, uh, OD for requesting some tables, and chairs, and garbage, for about four hundred people at the, at the, uh, let's say, the old.
Low Country Bowl.
Old Low Country Bowl, this is something that we have been doing for the last several years, and they can have someone come pick it up.
I believe so, yes, I think they did nice time, Mr. Beard and his family helped out.
So I guess we can go ahead and vote, which is in, move forward, pretty much, Senator Jones.
What was it called, President, at the OD, what was it called?
Low Country Bowl.
Low Country Bowl, food?
Yes, it's a.
I know what it is, I know, I know what it is. I just didn't hear, I know what it is.
Okay.
I'm not surprised.
Uh, Councilwoman.
I have a question on that, uh, you said they can use the tables and chair, uh, or, what I'm saying, they've been getting the tables and chairs, so they've been getting them from the public building, uh, from old there?
In the past, yes, ma'am.
In, in there?
We also own the building too.
And that's true.
You got, I think the George Evans Building.
Yeah, George Evans Building is coming from there.
In the past, yeah?
That's one of the number one fundraisers, um, for, for the year.
So this is the, this way it go, we got an old depot sitting out there, enjoying theirs, so, uh.
Enjoy ourselves, if you can come down there and get a ticket.
And, and if you listen to.
And then I get, uh, some beer.
And if you listen to a public service announcement.
Crawfish and shrimp primarily, yeah.
If you listen to a public service announcement, they have a Cajun.
You have a Cajun band.
Pretty good.
I think, uh. I got a, I got a question from a, Miss Five, the D-Dow's radio station here, recorded another.
Yeah.
Very flavorful radio's commercial for a low depot, low country.
They did, great job.
Oh, man, you can't, you can't go wrong.
Nothing song for a Cajun music.
And also, uh, Councilman Jones. It's not here tonight, and I would talk with him about, uh, putting on this committee that I would discuss with him, so see if we can move forward with it. Uh, last but not least, I have a committee for the twenty-twenty, uh, committee, I just need to make sure that, I think we lost that sheet that I passed out, and I don't understand if it's gonna need it, Councilwoman Thomas, you still have your, your committee sheet?
Yeah, I have it.
Did I give it to you?
Yeah.
Okay, can you bring it tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, if you can bring it tomorrow, that would help out a lot.
They didn't change it?
No.
No, he didn't change anything on it, because he kept everybody on the same committee they was on the last time.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm going to, uh, if you can bring that tomorrow, and then we can give Miss Ellison a copy, so when she need to call with me, she would know who's on what committee. All right, all right, without saying that shit.
You had it on this ass, man.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, alright, I thought we had already voted, I didn't vote for it, that's all getting voted for this.
I don't think we voted for it, didn't vote for it.
Yeah, we, we, we voted for the amount, I'm sure, that amount, seven thousand dollars, it nothing to do with me, uh, but my question is, the seven thousand dollars, what value do we get?
Oh, I, I invited her to be with me at work session, uh, Ms. Brer, see if we got a fucking.
She doesn't get paid.
This, this is.
I'm not asking you to vote on it tonight.
This is, this is.
I think the voter for one, some of the others.
She is playing us.
She is charging us for what she is required to do in order to secure the grant, she can very well use up whatever amount, just using this type, this type of bill, and have an accomplice at hand, so. I, I don't see a value.
That's why I said, that's why I invited her for the next work session, uh, see if we are jumping up on the citizens to record. Look for the, yeah, look.
Is it, uh, uh, Dallas, uh, I mean, Dallas County, uh, Rec, Recreation Center is taking all of the kids for the, uh, going to play ball for free this year, isn't it?
As many as they can.
That's what I'm saying, so, can I, uh, right now, our recreation department out there really doesn't have anything going on, because they have this free ball going out, yes? Free, parents come here looking for, well, how to get their.
Be late.
Yes.
Can't be free. Then they, then they do a lot of things for free.
Go sit down.
So that means.
Go ahead.
Before you close out, so that means when those guys are asking for more money dealing with the, that, that does not include with, with Dallas Academy.
Not longer an issue.
So they, there's no longer issues, so, you know, we don't have to fill them out, that's their account money. Yes, because they, they move, the ball, everybody taking the kids to where it's free at now.
Wow, that's a great marketing strategy.
Yeah, and they pressed hard, they went to schools, and they went to elementary schools, and they asked, and they kept coming until they got what they want.
Yes.
They did what we should have done two years ago, three years ago, we just didn't do it, shame.